Good morning. Frank came in late, so I'll call him to order the February 4th regular meeting of Haywood County Board of Commissioners and our first item of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance and after that I'll ask Reverend Patrick Womack, our chaplain, to come forward for the invocation. So if you, everyone, please rise for the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, to the revival of which it seems, to the nation and under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
Let's pray. Most gracious God, our Father in heaven, we praise your name and thank you for the opportunity to conduct the people's business in this place. We thank you for these, our commissioners, and ask your continued blessing upon them and your provision for them and for their families. Lord, relieve them of their burdens and the cares that they bring into this place. Help them, Lord, to carry out their duties today with the understanding that you give wisdom, knowledge, and discernment. Help them to see clearly through matters and, Lord, bless that in governing they may lead as they would want to be led, that we all, in fact, may do unto others as we would have them do unto us. And we pray for your protection, particularly for those who serve us in this county, whether in law enforcement or in the classroom. We pray for safety and protection, especially for our children and the least among us. Grant that this county may be a safe place where children can be raised and, Lord, that you will bless us to be a place that the rest of this nation would look to and find in Haywood County an example of what it means to live for you and to be good citizens. We pray all of this in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Okay, next we'll have our public comment and we ask that you keep your comments limited to three minutes and please speak into the microphone so we can hear you. And then I don't have anyone signed up at this time, but if anyone would like to make a public comment, you can do so at this time. Just come up and state your name and maybe where you live. So would anyone like to public comment this morning? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment. And next we'll move to constituent concerns and Tommy, did you have any that you want to comment on?
Not really constituent concerns, but I appreciate our chaplain, Patrick Womack. He was careful to pray for everybody here but himself today. He indicated to us before the meeting that he's having shoulder surgery this week, so I wanted to definitely remember our chaplain.
Okay, yeah, appreciate that.
Yeah, I know the same thing. I mean, he come asking if I needed prayer for anything and I said, "Sounds like you're the one that needs prayer this week," so we'll remember him this week, so.
Kirk?
I don't have any.
You have anything? Okay, all right, good. Okay, our next item of business will be administrative agency reports and we'll have our introduction of new employees by our county manager, Brian Moorhead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have six new employees with us today from Health and Human Services, Nicole Parrish, please stand. The Sheriff's Office, we have Dana Capous. Library, Madeline Hagan. Developmental and Facility Services, Margene Love and Rebecca Olson. And Tax Assessor, Levi Cullen. These are our new employees. Thank you.
Hey, thank y'all for coming this morning and if y'all want to go to work, you can at this time or not. If you want to stay for the meeting, I think that would be okay too. We started this a few months ago by our interim county manager and I think it's a good thing to do to introduce y'all to the public, so thank y'all for coming this morning. Okay, our next item will be the discussion adjustment to the agenda. On Friday, we spoke about adding, what I'd like to do is under number five of new business, add a request of approval to hire four additional full-time paramedic positions for EMS and it's because of the inability of the staff to staff medic seven unit with part-time staff, which is what we had budgeted as originally planned. And so the part-time funds that are available will be able to hire, I'm sorry, full-time staff instead of part-time. And this will provide coverage from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days per week. So can I entertain a motion to have that added as item number five on the new business? Tom.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is any discussion?
I think we need to have some more information before we consider something this important because once they get here, there's not going to be an easy way to undo this because it's going to affect families and it's going to affect lives. I think to see that management is doing exactly what needs to be done with the resources they have right now and not able to do it any other way is what I would like to see. And right now, I'm not convinced that that's happening because I don't have any information. We need response times for a year because that was something that was brought up. We need response times for a great period of time, but we also need to compare that to the last month. The rescue squads had a minor issue in the last month and we don't know what that did to affect it. There's a large number of EMS employees and I think if that ambulance needs to be up and they don't have the resources, there's enough part-time people or full-time people that they could use out of the budget to do that now. I think it's a drastic means to go in and hire somebody to fill a position that you haven't tried every other way to do and I'm not convinced at this point that we can make a decision on something that important today.
Okay. Do you have any other discussion? Okay, well, I'll call for a vote to add it to the agenda then we can discuss it further. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
No.
Okay, that's supported one. Okay. And we'll talk about that when we get to it then, Mark. Appreciate your comments. Okay. Okay, our next item of business will be O Business and it'll be the request approval of an economic grant of incentives on additional investment of $1,925,753 by Evergreen Packaging Incorporated as part of the jobs maintenance and capital development agreement. And we had a public hearing on this at our last meeting, so Brian, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. Francis has talked to the board about twice about this. It's an abundance of information. This agreement was first passed in December of 2014. Since that time, the state changed the rules that govern economic development incentives, so we're just bringing this to you to approve even though this board adopted it in 2014. If you need other information, I can provide that.
Okay. Is anybody here having any comments on that? Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, for the approval of the economic grant of incentives of additional investment of 1.9 million plus by Evergreen Packaging as part of the jobs maintenance and capital development agreement. And before we get a motion for that, I just wanted to say that one of our commissioners, Tommy Long, is an employee with Evergreen and we've checked with our county attorney and our county attorney says it's, I think Frank, you thought it was okay for him to vote on this since he's?
Yes, he's actually required to vote on the matter. He can't recuse himself, but he doesn't have a direct financial impact from the actions taken. He's just an employee of a multinational corporation that owns this particular piece of property.
Okay, just want to make sure that's clear then, good. Okay, I'll entertain a motion then. Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay. Okay, then second item, we also had a public hearing for a request of approval of economic grant agreement for 11th Hour Brewing LLC and we have our county manager again and Cece maybe if she wants to comment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Cece.
Okay.
Thank you. Hope everyone had a good weekend. Today I want to introduce, once again, we have Kelsey Baker and Alisa Tatum here with 11th Hour Brewery. They are the owners here. I don't know if I need to go over everything again because this will be the third time that we've done this, so just wanted to make sure that they get recognized and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Okay, we had a public hearing last time and no one commented. Has anyone received any comments or anything?
None.
Okay, I haven't had any. Okay, all right, I'll entertain a motion to approve this, the economic grant agreement for 11th Hour Brewing LLC. Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you want to oppose. Okay, that's unanimous. I had forgotten, yeah, I skipped over the consent agenda. It's so short. This meeting is going to be so short, I don't know what to do. So the consent agenda, the only item was the request approval of the January 22nd, 2019 regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any additions, corrections, or changes to those?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda and the regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, the first item of new business will be to be to request the approval of a waiver of the facility usage fees for the use of the historic courtroom by the Waynesville Historic Preservation Commission Annual Speaker Series. And we have our, the Town of Waynesville Land Development Administrator Byron Hickox here this morning to speak to that.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Excuse my voice, I'm getting over a little something. I think everybody's got a touch of something. Our annual, this is actually our fourth annual historic speaker series that our Historic Preservation Commission has put on for the last three years. We have always done four speakers for four consecutive months. This year it will actually only be three, so I guess the first order would be to address these dates that we've requested. We have it listed as the first Thursday at 4:00 PM of March, April, May, and June and then the second Tuesday, or second Thursday, excuse me, as a backup date in case of cancellation due to inclement weather or if our speaker were ill or had some sort of conflict. We actually, just on Friday, heard from our tentative speaker for the June dates and he is not going to be able to make it. So we can, for the record, if we could, scratch those June dates, June the 6th and June the 13th.
Okay.
So our speaker series this year will only be the first Thursday of March, April, and May with the second Thursday as a backup contingency date. It's at 4:00 in the afternoon on that, on those particular days. We would probably need to get into the room about 3:00 just to go over the sound system, the use of a microphone. They will all have some sort of visual aid on a zip drive or thumb drive, so we'll need the screens as well.
Okay.
And we wanted to, we've talked for years about doing it in one of our great historic buildings. We did have one event in the past in the Folk Moot Center. Acoustics weren't the best, but it was well received. It was actually Mary Ann Inlow talking about the history of Hazelwood, so it was appropriate place to hold it. We've talked for a couple of years about having it here and showing off one of our great historic buildings, so we'd appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Okay, and usually to waive fees when we're doing it government to government, we usually do that.
Sure.
So this is not something out of the ordinary for us to do and I also understand that those are very well attended.
They are very well attended and it's actually another benefit to having it here. The capacity of our town boardroom, according to our chief building inspector, who's the fire marshal, I think is only about 83 or 84 people is what can safely occupy that room and we've had quite a few more than that on more than one occasion, so that's another benefit to having it here. We've got a lot more capacity and get to show off a great room and a great facility and have a little more room to spread out.
Right, yeah, okay. I think it's really appropriate to have it here, so I appreciate y'all thinking of us.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you know who the speakers are?
We do. You put me on the spot. Actually, Patrick Womack is the speaker in April. He'll be speaking on the history of the settlers of Hyatt Creek and Plott Creek and sort of the settlement of those two valleys. Alex McKay will be speaking in March about the lost buildings of Waynesville. He'll bring some great old historic photographs of which Alex has a great archive to show some of the great old commercial buildings and mansions and hotels and boarding houses that have been lost to time, rather, to fire or floods or demolition or otherwise. And again, I'm on the spot here trying to think of who our May speaker is. Sorry, I can't recall at the moment.
That's okay.
We're actually, we actually kind of got everything finalized on Friday and I'm putting together a little flyer that we'll have posted around town, so.
Okay, yeah, I've known Alex since he's a little boy and he has really gotten a passion for history.
He sure does.
And he's got some really neat photos of, you know, when I look at him, I'm like, "Okay, this is where this is" and you kind of visualize what was there then and what's there now.
Yeah, and he does a great job of sort of putting you into those historic photos and saying, "This is where Hazelwood Avenue is now and this is where this building is now and none of it's there" and he can visualize all those things, so he does a great job.
All right. Okay, well, if there's anyone else got a question or anything? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the request to waive the fees for the historic courtroom for the dates that are indicated in, which would be March 7th, April 4th, and May the 2nd, and then there will be backup dates in case something happens and they can't, so.
I did just remember the third speaker is Nancy Watkins with Lake Junalauska. She'll be speaking about the history of Lake Junalauska and its impact on the history of Haywood County.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good too. Okay, so I'll request, well, I'll ask for a motion to approve the waiver of facility usage fees for the use of the historic courtroom by the Waynesville Historic Preservation Commission Annual Speaker Series.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Okay, next item, make sure I don't forget something here. The next item of new business will be the request approval to set the advertising date of March 27th, 2019 for the 2018 delinquent real estate taxes. And then also Greg will be giving us a, his main, one of his main jobs by statute is to give us a report on the first meeting or the first Monday in February of our tax situation, I guess I can say.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I'm here to request approval to advertise the 2018 delinquent taxes on Wednesday, March 27th, 2019. Also concerning the delinquent taxes, as of January 24th, the delinquent taxes were But ran the report running through the end of January, the 31st, our delinquent taxes So we collected $231,000 during the last week of January.
Wow, okay.
I think we mentioned in our budget meeting Friday that we had a really good January as far as collections go. We were a million dollars behind going at the end of December, but we've made that up and moved past that. We're a little bit over, almost like $37,800, almost $38 million collected so far.
Okay.
I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
When is the last day to pay your taxes before you get your name placed in the paper?
Well, discussion with the mountaineer is that we're going to get them the information around the 18th of March.
Okay.
And then from that point on, if someone pays after the 18th, we can edit that through the mountaineer, so it looks like maybe the 25th day would be, the 25th of March, we could edit you out up until that day.
If you want, if you want to make sure you don't have your name in the paper, you'll pay it before March 18th?
Actually, yeah.
I mean, you can do it after it, March 18th.
Yes, but for sure.
To make sure that there's.
Exactly, yes, sir.
So pretty much we're going to own the paper on this day if we stick at $3,800,000.
I'm sorry.
I said, "Pretty much we're going to own the paper that day."
Pretty much.
If it stays the way it is right now. I'm just curious, what kind of an impact does it normally have on the delinquencies once they are published?
Well, I'm not sure, Mr. Pliss, exactly how that works, but I do know that when we send out the delinquent notices here in the next week, we really get a big bump there. So I expect this number to decrease quite a bit between now and the 18th, but I'd be willing to get that information for you after it publishes and report on that at a later date.
That would be good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any other questions? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the date of March 27th, 2019 for the 2018 delinquent real estate taxes. Tom.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, and that's unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Greg. Hey, the third item of new business is to request approval of amendment to declaration of restrictive covenants for Beaver Dam Industrial Park and our attorney, Frank Queel, will sit on that.
This came from the economic development side. The county developed an industrial site and it's called Beaver Dam Industrial Park, I don't know, a long time ago. And at the time, a set of restrictive covenants was recorded that has the conditions of the use of the property. And the restrictive covenants at the time are very unusual because it's for a, it's for a very specific kind of economic development for industrial use. The idea at the time, which was late 90s or something, was that the county was encouraging economic development, industrial, create industrial jobs essentially. The thinking was that industrial jobs were likely to be the most productive in terms of the expenditure of public funds for the improvement of sites where those industrial jobs would be located. Time has passed, like 20 years or something, 19 years, and the, the drive in general has been more toward a service economy. There's less, there's less need really for industrial jobs and fewer opportunities frankly for finding appropriate industrial uses. So the notion was to simply broaden slightly the potential uses of the site to include commercial properties and commercial is very, first of all, it's not defined in the restrictions, so we added a definition in these restrictions of what commercial is, which is anything that's for-profit economic activity. That's about as broad as you could get. But the idea was that, for example, an appropriate service type business for that kind of site would be like a call center where you're employing a bunch of people for a use that certainly isn't industrial, but it's also not retail and it's also not residential, of course. So the idea was to broaden the potential uses thereby broadening the potential market for future employers for parts of this site. The site was originally 100 acres in that neighborhood. It's now down to like 50 acres or something like that and all of that's not 100% usable, obviously. Some of it's pretty hilly, others parts pretty nice. Anyway, the request was to, let's broaden this potential use to include commercial uses, to define commercial use very broadly. And then, and then me as a housekeeper, I couldn't help looking at a set of restrictions that were 20 years old and I decided that it needed a paragraph about how you would do future amendments, so I put a paragraph on for that. And we've notified the existing users out there. There are three other, the county owns four separate sites, you could call them, of the property. There are three other existing users there and we've given them all notice of the potential change and David's been talking to them and all that, so. Anyway, that's the, the proposal is to, is for the county to approve those amendments to the restrictions and then broaden our attractiveness for the site for those kinds of uses.
And I think we even have one tenant or owner out there now that's commercial, not industrial, so.
Yeah, yeah, actually, actually you already have a user there that's, yeah, they probably need this change if they were to sell the site because all of, all the people who are using it now are the original buyers, the actual original buyers, and there's been no resales of the thing yet, but you never know about that. And Francis's work on economic development seems to be, you know, drawing interest to all sites, all kinds of places. This makes it better sense.
That's very true. Okay, does anyone have any questions for Frank?
Frank, we don't have to have the requirement for the other property owners in order to amend these restrictions. I was just checking it right now myself and I.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I appreciate another set of eyes on it. The way we've, does the version you have have just a signature line for the county? I've asked them to prepare this document with signature lines for the other three owners out there too and just see what, which of them will. I don't think it's really required because the document itself is utterly silent about how many has to join in it to make an amendment to it. It's just silent on that issue. There is a statute that kind of vaguely might apply, Chapter 47F, but I'm not even positive that it does because it's fewer than 20 lots, it's industrial use only. I don't think probably Chapter 47F actually applies, but I think that it might be a better plan. The part that we're approving is just the county's signature to the document, but I think that it might be a good idea and I've asked them to do this. We'll send David around maybe to ask the, them that will to join in, in the amendment too. It's, I don't, it's kind of vague whether or not the rest of them have to join into it or not, but we could, probably.
So you think we're just going by the term and amendment clause to determine? Is that where we're basing?
The term and amendment section, I've just completely replaced it with the two paragraphs you see there.
Right.
Because the original doesn't have anything at all about, doesn't even say, it has a term, "Oh, oh, oh, I should mention that." That's pretty funny. The original restrictions lasted 120 years and that was a typo. It went to 22, 20 something or other. It was really, it was, they slipped a digit there.
22, 26.
Yeah, there you go. And I thought, that was a typo, I thought, and so I just lopped off a couple hundred years off of that and made it expire when I thought they meant for it to expire and then added the automatic renewal section on there. And that was, yeah, otherwise it is a little weird that 20, I've never seen restrictions that lasted longer than 100 years. But what do you think about the idea of just, of just, what we're approving here today is the county's signing of the amendment and then we'll get who we can out there, probably all. And then we'll get who we can out there, probably all of them, to to join in the amendment too, because it improves the marketability of their property.
Sure.
Just from reading over this, we've got 61 acres left out there.
Is that 61?
Roughly 61 acres. So we're just talking about that 61 acres that Haywood County still owns, designating that as commercial or industrial, is that?
If the others join in it, to the extent that others join in it, they'll be definitely subjecting their properties to the amendment too. Okay?
That'll be entirely up to them.
If they didn't join in it, then there's a real good lawyer question about whether or not it applies to them or not. Maybe, maybe not. If you want to go on another, one lawyer, I mean, one businessman one time said he wished he had a lawyer who only had one arm because then he could stop telling him on the other hand. But the fact is that.
It depends is a very good lawyer.
It depends is, in this case, is one of those that's interesting, actually.
Well, should we not have their input before we kind of try to decide what we're going to do? Because I mean, we don't want to do anything that's going to upset them, but we also don't want to do anything that's going to restrict us. Is this something that can't wait until David has a chance to go talk to these people and see kind of their input?
They, David has delivered already a copy of the proposed change to all the all the existing tenants. That's a week or so ago, and they're all big companies. We didn't really expect to get much of a reaction. There's been some contact, but the issue is is actually for the counties, the issue is actually pretty important for the counties' remaining property. Because if that became, if if we had an economic development potential for that, the need would be for it to be fairly quickly resolved, the availability of the property to be available for a commercial use fairly quickly. That's up to y'all.
Who do we not have their input from? I know you're talking about most of the people that are inhabiting that right now. You were talking about how reaching out to the surrounding landowners and talking to them after we make this decision. Who are we leaving out that's not been talked to?
Nobody, nobody, nobody's not been talked to. And and let me be clear about that. We wouldn't reach out to anybody that's around the property. We just reached out to the, there's three tenants, three industrial tenants on the site now of the original 100 acres. There's three, there aren't tenants, there are three owners in the in the.
They're listed here in the attachment you may assign.
Well, and what confused me was he said something about we needed to talk to the people and kind of get their input and send David back out to talk to them. And that's what threw me because the way that sounds, it sounds like everybody that's affected by this hasn't been approached.
No, I'm sorry, that's that's my two, talking too vague. David has hand delivered and also mailed copies of this proposed change to the owners of the other three that would be affected by it. And and they've been silent except one has made some vague questions about it, and that's it. But but unless they sign, it's a it's a lawyer question about whether or not this change would actually affect them or not. They're already making the use they're making of their own sites. Okay? So this is actually kind of forward looking for uses that would be made in future, definitely on the county's property, maybe on theirs.
So how could this adversely affect us? What do you foresee out of this that could adversely affect us if it doesn't go our way? If someone objects, you keep saying there's a there's lawyer opinions.
No, it only applies, the only question is whether it applies to these other three owners. It doesn't, there's nothing negative to the county. The county can make this change on the 61 acres it still owns, and nobody else sign anything, and we're done.
Okay.
I mean, boom, you're done.
Okay.
But it would be better, in a real estate lawyer's mind, to have as many as he could to join in it.
Right, and I understand that, as long as there's no way they can come back on us because of what we're doing, then I'm okay with it.
Yeah, and I think Ameripride is, that's like, used to be Plus Cleaners, I think, or one of these companies, and they're using it commercially. They're not industrial either, so looks like they'd be more than glad. And like you said, it it opens it up to, if they can only market their companies to sell to an industrial manufacturer, that's probably not, that's that's not very many buyers. But a commercial buyer would be, you know, a commercial. So it's, so that's, that's one good thing for the county, and so.
I'm surprised that we actually, but the fact is, all the people who own it now were the original buyers, or 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 the same user, same kind of user, same user. And so it's surprising to me kind of that it's gone 20 years and nobody's ever asked to broaden it from their end.
Yeah. That's true. That's true. Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the amendment, this is just for our signature, to the declaration of restrictive covenants for Beaver Dam Industrial Park.
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So are we going to sign this today? Or are we going to attempt to obtain their signatures before we record it?
What I was thinking was we sign ours today, and then we chase it around for the rest of the guys and just kind of find out which way they're going to go, and then record it after you got that. It it would, you could record it in stages with the with the additional ones coming in when they come in, or you could just do it all at once. It's kind of a judgment call on that, I think.
Okay. I mean, considering considering the original restrictions in the amendment to that, I would like to see the other people sign it as well, especially the one that's in violation of the current restrictions. I believe they need to sign it as soon as possible. And and I guess my issue would be, they took title subject to these restrictions, and therefore they have the benefit of the restrictions, and I'm concerned about their enforcement of the restrictions against someone who's acting commercially at this point in time when they probably shouldn't be.
Yeah.
Okay. So we are approving this because this is what we want, and then we're searching out to get signatures.
Yeah, and then and then leave it to the next bunch of lawyers to, if if there was a situation where there was a dispute on these previous owners, on their ownership sale, whatever of the property, that'll be their little red wagon then.
Okay.
Not not ours.
Is it possible that the people that David is talking to, that you or I or one of us or Bryant could speak with them as well?
I'm sure that that with the approval, if if the county, if the if this board approves it, that that would be a much, that'd be a little nudge, a better nudge in that direction. Sure, we can run them down.
Okay. So we are proving to sign and record or approve, we are proving that we we want to approve this document as a board because we believe we need this document, and then we're going to seek out other signatures due to, okay?
Exactly.
All right.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay. So Brandon made a motion, Mark's seconded it. Okay. Okay, all those in favor designate by saying aye. Okay, you want to oppose?
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to propose that we have a discussion about restrictive covenants in every county board meeting going forward, just any kind of, real estate lawyers very seldom get a chance to talk in public about restrictive covenants, but we're, I think that it would enliven the meetings if we could do that.
Only if we've got a short agenda, I might add. Only if we got a shorter agenda.
Yeah, we want to say no to that.
I would like to have that discussion later after we obtain more signatures.
I would say something, but I'm not about opinions, but anyway. The fourth item of new business is to request approval of a resolution supporting local control of school calendars. And the, our school board had asked me if we would pass a resolution similar to the one that they passed. Their board is concerned, and I think, and I'm going to, I guess I'll read this, and it pretty well states the the points that they're making. And, you know, we live, we live in the mountains, and it's, even in mountain counties, it's different, in different mountain counties. So it really, you know, we really need to have flexibility in our school calendar. So I'm going to just go ahead and read this, if that's okay. It says, whereas the North Carolina general statutes gives local boards of education powers of supervision and control of local school systems. And whereas the local control over establishing school calendars is an integral component of school system supervision and administrative powers with which local boards of education have been vested. And whereas in 24, 2004, the North Carolina General Assembly seized control of setting school calendars and imposed a one size fits all mandate on how school calendars are to be set. And whereas the current one size fits all school calendar start date is no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26, and the end date is no later than the Friday closest to June 11. And whereas the state mandated late August start date means high schools do not compete for the first semester until mid to late January, or rather, complete the first semester until mid to late January. And whereas the current law essentially requires public school students to take first semester exams after the winter break, which negatively impacts test scores according to students and educators. And whereas the second semester for high schools starts two to three weeks later than community college and universities. And whereas superintendents report that the calendar misalignment makes it nearly impossible for high schools' students or recent winter graduates to take courses at nearby community college or university during the second semester. And whereas exams for advanced placement international baccalaureate classes are given on the same day nationwide, and the current calendar law shortens the amount of time North Carolina students have to learn the material before test day. And whereas it is well documented through multiple studies that children will experience a phenomena known as summer learning loss, which has a disproportionate impact on low income children. Whereas the long summer breaks can also negatively impact child nutrition as low income children who have access to regular meals at school through the free and reduced price meal program may not have access to regular meals at home. And whereas with little flexibility built into the calendar, scheduling makeup days is extremely challenging. Whereas major hurricanes and severe winter storms have caused Haywood County schools to miss 26 school days over the past three years. And whereas fall sports and band begin August 1st, and schedules for extracurricular, extracurriculars have not changed to coincide with the state mandated school calendar. And whereas the local boards of education are best equipped to understand the balancing act of meeting the community's needs and maximizing student success. Whereas restoring local control of school calendars will allow local boards of education to best meet the calendar preferences of families, educators, businesses in our community while allowing for innovative, experimental approaches to improve student achievement. Be it resolved that the Haywood County Board of Commissioners support the Haywood County School Board control of calendar flexibility. So they had asked that I ask you as a board to approve this. And all they're doing is just asking the legislatures to to maybe give them some flexibility. I think, I think this was probably done because your coastal counties really like this because it gives them, it gives the, you know, kind of a longer holiday or a break for people to go to the coast, and it also gives them the the summer help, I guess, if you will. But negatively, it impacts us because we have the snow days that they don't have down there. In fact, you know, it snows here, and they cancel school because of Fines Creek. And some mountain counties, like Keenworth County, that does not even have high elevation counties where that's an issue, so. But anyway, there was some discussion over this. See, buddy.
No, I'm I'm in favor of it. I mean, after you had kids in the public school system, you understand what a lot of this is saying. So after experiencing that with my three kids, I agree with it, and you know, not one size fits all. So I think it's important to hand this to our, our local, the local people to make these decisions.
I remember vaguely whenever they started this, they started it because the school systems were beginning school the first week in August. And the reasoning that the government gave and the state level was that they were destroying the economy because they were taking the summers away. I remember their reasoning for it, and I'm not real sure that I buy into that reasoning. However, I think there are other options today that would help with what they're wanting to accomplish. A lot of school systems have gone to virtual reality days. They have gone to days that they don't miss whenever there's inclement weather. If you'll watch Transylvania County, and they're in the same situation we are as far as terrain and everything else, they put on TV that today's a virtual day. Kids are in school. I still have connections with Pickens County. They have no missed days anymore. If they are out of school, everybody has a tablet. They do their school at home on the day that they're out. I think there's a better way of doing this than trying to get the legislature to remove this. If that didn't work, probably this might be a good idea, but I think there's too many other options. I think they're just looking at it on the easiest way to fix it.
I know one other thing to add, you know, one of the things that was mentioned here is they they have to take their testing after the winter break for the first semester, which is one thing I can recall with my kids, you know, being difficult because they they study and prepare, and then they have their winter break, and then they come back and take the test for that semester, which is not, not a good thing. Ain't good for me, anyway. I don't retain things that long, so. I need to do it right away. That way, it's a whole lot easier. I mean, I do agree with Mark and what Mark's saying, you know, maybe there is some better options and better ways, but maybe this is the first step, so.
I know at state level, our legislative goals conference and other committees, the general theme was to try to get control back to the local people on several committees, you know, agriculture, the Health and Human Services Committee, and there were several issues came up, and and the general thinking is each county knows what their needs are better than somebody down on the coast. And if we can get each county to have more control, then we pretty well know what we need and trust our leaders to make good decisions, so. That is a general theme to try to get counties to have local control more so than having somebody in Raleigh that may be a little disattached, trying to delegate to us and tell us what we need, so.
Yeah, the tablets would be a good idea. I could see how that'd work. I guess.
They issue them, and they carry them with them. And then whenever the TV says you're out of school today, everybody knows school starts at 8 o'clock. And it's it's not necessarily teacher orientation. It is things that the teachers have up there. They still do their work, and I believe, and I'd have to find out for sure, but I believe Transylvania also has some forms of instruction that they give to where the kids can watch, but things that they have done previously. So it'd be nice to know.
Yeah. And and I guess there'd be a cost on the tablets.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure. Most of these others got them through grants from the state.
Yeah.
So it didn't cost the local systems anything.
You sure the kids would be for this, Mark?
They would not. It's hard. But, you know, once you get to the 12th grade, you can do what you wish to do.
That's the truth. Okay. Okay, is any other discussion? This time I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
That I read.
So move.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor designate by saying aye. Okay, you want to oppose?
No.
That's four to one. Okay. The fifth item of new business will be the request to hire four additional full-time paramedic positions for EMS because of the inability to staff medic seven with part-time staff as originally planned. Part-time funds are available to hire full-time staff, and it'll provide coverage from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM for seven days a week. And we, I think, too, we were trying to fill a little bit of a hole that's been left by the Haywood County Rescue Squad.
Thank you very much. I just want to start out by thanking the county commissioners for your support of emergency services. You've always stepped up to the plate throughout the years to support us as as we grow to You've always stepped up to the plate throughout the years to support us as, as we grow to the needs of the community. I do also want to thank you, thank the partners that we have here. I can't mention everybody, but every day, law enforcement, fire departments, and the rescue squad, from the hospital, other staff, other agencies in the community do so much to have our backs and we try to have theirs. I also want to thank the county, the county manager, as well as many of the department heads that support us on a daily basis. This is, really is one big team that it takes us. Obviously, one department doesn't have the, the resources to do anything alone. It makes a big difference. In emergency services, our mission is preparedness, incident management, and quality medical care, one hundred percent of the time, all day, every day, as best as we can do it. I think our citizens depend on that. That is a tremendous burden on us. It's also an expectation on both of us that we be able to provide that. How do we save lives? How do we, how do we accomplish our mission? We do that by responding to all emergencies in a timely and effective fashion. We also train over and beyond our minimum job responsibilities so that we are prepared for whatever happens. We check every piece of equipment every single day on every unit to make sure that we have everything we need to save a life. They do that every day. And they utilize state-of-the-art equipment and technology to accomplish that task. This is what the front line does every day to make sure that they can accomplish the mission. Now, it takes a lot of support. Many of the quotes that you have out there, some of them have left me right now, but they mentioned outrunning your logistics, not being able to support the front lines. I think that's a huge deal, and that's why I'm also thanking a lot of these other county departments that support us for doing this. But internally, some of the things that we do is we've created and we maintain a robust hiring process. We want to hire the best people for the job. That takes time to do. Also, ordering, stocking, maintenance of equipment, vehicles, and materials. Community paramedicine program was something that we recently discussed here with, with you as the commissioners, and you authorized us to do. We're hoping that in the future, that would reduce some non-emergency nine-one-one calls for service. We have increased our opportunities for staff training, which is always important. A discussion even last week from you was the compensation and benefits that's provided as incentives to recruitment and retention of our staff, working with human resources and finance to do so. Managing within our budgeted funds, something you definitely expect us to do, to make sure that we efficiently operate and that we're not wasting money or not being, not receiving enough money. Maintaining a culture of safety. Can you imagine not having a culture of safety and focusing on that whenever they are responding to dangerous emergency scenes? That takes a lot of time to be able to promote that. Implementing health and wellness initiatives to support a healthier workforce. We took the lead on that a couple of years ago, and now there are many departments also working on that initiative. I believe it's a priority of the county manager as well to try to do something, to try to support all employees for a healthier workforce. Create and enforce standard operational guidelines for consistency, something that we haven't always had in emergency services. That takes time to make sure that we promote that. And then finally, collaborating to produce efficient emergency management plans and agreements, responding to major emergencies, not just daily emergencies. What are we asking for from the commissioners in order to provide this medical response? You have the handout from Friday's presentation, but do you also have the additional handout that we provided today? If not, we have copies. They have the, okay. Thank you. The Board of County Commissioners, a couple of years ago, approved this peak time ambulance that we call medic seven for part-time coverage. So what I mean by that is to utilize part-time staff to cover that medic seven or the peak time unit. We've been successful in, in covering or staffing that part-time unit only about a third of the time. And the reason's because, you know, part-time staff, we've actually called around to talk to other counties, and we're seeing that is a similar, a similar challenge is the unscheduled leave and some of the challenges they have with part-time staff. We have really good part-time staff, but when they, when it's scheduled months out in advance, of course, they're able to help us, but some of the short-term coverage is very difficult, hence the third of the time that we're able to cover it. We're asking to utilize four full-time new staff, seven days a week, seven AM to seven PM, in order to be able to staff this unit. The proposal is within existing EMS budgeted funds through July, which is about sixty-seven thousand dollars. Again, because of your support to us, we've been able to, to save that money and put it towards just a different strategy for staffing the unit that you've already approved us utilizing.
Okay. How many calls on your rescue squad? How many did they answer last year?
Okay, so two hundred and seventy-seven times last year, and this is just two thousand and eighteen data. And that report that you have in front of you shows the time by day of the week, or excuse me, by time of day. And so these are the times, we have a plan built into the system where the rescue squad is called to back us up, to support us when there's emergency medical calls. And these are the times of day that they do that. And the total time was two seventy-seven.
And then medic seven, I think you said they did a hundred and ten?
About, well, exactly a hundred and ten days last year are the days that we, that we officially staffed it with those part-time folks.
Okay.
And beyond, beyond that, what we try to do is, of course, staff it with, support staff that we utilize from the office. We also utilize the shift supervisors to do so. And then ultimately, if that is not available, which from time to time it is not, then we are forced to use out-of-county resources such as Jackson County Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians or Buncombe County to support us in that endeavor.
How does that work, Greg? If we do request, is that mutual aid? I mean, are we charged for that, or?
No, sir.
We, we do the same for them, I assume?
We do. It's reciprocal. And it's, again, another, something that we do on a daily basis from the support side. We create mutual aid agreements. We create plans. Of course, we hope to not have to enact those plans frequently, but we, we have to be able to ensure that the citizens get what they, what they need when there's an emergency. So, yes.
Yes, any other questions? Did you have some?
I got lots of them.
Okay.
We were told Friday that this impacted response times. The average response time last year compared to the average response time in the last thirty days, how much is that?
I don't, I don't have the average response time in the last thirty days.
You say two hundred and seventy-seven times that the squad was called up into service over here. That's not even one time a year. It sounds like a really big number when you put it all together, but it's not even once a day. I mean, you're gonna spend sixty-seven thousand dollars to put somebody on an ambulance that you might or might not need them? How, how do you justify that?
I think that every single call every day is very important. We have to place statistics and numbers. And, you know, you know, the old analogy of putting an ambulance on every street corner, of course, is not an efficient way of doing business. But when you look at the data and look at the statistics, the volume of calls during the daytime hours, which is what we're asking for, is a pretty heavy percentage. Eighty-seven percent of the time, we're able to cover those vacancies for when the citizen might call for a stroke or a heart attack or a car accident. And we would be able to be there for them, the largest percentage of the time.
You say you're using part-timers to fill it. How many times did you say that was done? A hundred and something this year?
Mm-hmm.
You just said it's a hundred and, was it a hundred and ten, or was it?
It was a hundred and ten.
Okay. So you're almost there by using part-timers. Where are you at on your overtime budget for this year?
The overtime budget is, is slightly lower, and that's where we're also gonna be able to pull from. So the, the budgeted funds that we would reallocate would come from part-time that we saved, as well as some from overtime.
If you have resources left in your overtime budget, why can't you put people out there and come back for a budget amendment? Because once you hire people, you can't unhire them. I mean, they're just there forever. If you've got the money to do it out of your overtime budget, then we don't need to hire full-time people.
Okay. So we'll have some more statistics that might, that might help answer the question. The typical shift worker at EMS works two thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight hours a year. How many hours does a typical forty-hour-a-week person work? Two thousand and eighty? And so what we, what we do in, in public safety in, in general, is we ask folks to work quite a few hours more than the typical person works. That's something that we are trying to, to get away from, is working folks, way, folks way too many hours a week and per month. We want them to have time to spend more time with their families or whatever, you know, what they do when their, when their time is off.
So if you're trying to cut down their hours, you have four ambulances that work that schedule. You have two ambulances that work an entirely different schedule. How many hours do they work a year?
The other schedule, as you talked about, was two thousand two hundred and eighty-six hours as opposed to two thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight. So still over two hundred hours more than the average worker works in a yearly period.
Okay. So you have two employees that work twenty-nine hundred hours. You have, or you have part of your ambulance that work twenty-nine hundred hours. You have more employees that only work twenty-two hundred hours. How many employees did you have to hire to fill up the gap between the two of those?
I don't understand the question. I'm sorry.
If you're running, and, and you're running less hours, you have to have more people on those two ambulances. How many more people do you have?
That's right. And that was a decision made years ago by previous administration to hire more people to work less hours, or excuse me, more, less people to work more hours. Years ago, we all used to work, what he's referring to is the one day on, three days off. Every ambulance in Haywood County used to work one day on and three days off. And so a few years back, the Bethel property came available there at Silverbluff, and an additional ambulance was, was suggested to be utilized in that, in that space there when they rebuilt from a fire. And the way they determined to, to support that was to not hire additional staffing, but to work more hours with the existing staff. And that's when quite a few of the staff went to working twenty-nine hundred and sixty-eight hours a year.
So you have four people. Now, you could move those four people, put them on the same schedule with everyone else, still maintain the same number of ambulances, plus you would have four people to do exactly what you're telling. And now they're already employees, because employees is more than salary. Employees is benefits. Employees is retirement. Employees is a lot of other things. But you already have four people that can go in there and do that just by changing two ambulances' schedules to twenty-four, forty-eight, and you've got them.
What we would be asking for, those four folks to do, that already have a schedule of two thousand two hundred and eighty-six hours, is to work seven hundred more hours per year. That is not a schedule that they really wanted to work. They want to work the schedule that they're on.
They're not here to work the schedule they want to work. They're here to work the schedule for the needs of Haywood County.
Well, what's a normal schedule for an EMS worker? I mean, what is, what's the standard across?
If, if you look at the region, yeah, if you look at the region, we're working typical schedules that the other counties work.
Do that mean, do they have, do they all work the same schedule, or do they have different crews that work different schedules?
There are unique schedules within departments in other places, but most places work a similar schedule for all staff.
Okay.
Whether it's one day on and two days off, or a one day on and three days off, or the twelve-hour shifts, which is not as popular, but usually it's pretty consistent within the agency.
So most, most of the time, they work a twenty-four-hour shift?
Yes, in, in western North Carolina.
And, and then it's determined if, is it one day on, three days off, or one day on and two days off? Actually, how many hours would you work if you worked the one day on and three days off? I mean.
Two thousand two hundred and eighty-six.
And that would be a year.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That would be a year.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and is that a schedule that is, that is common and acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. And so that doesn't wear your people out?
No. We haven't seen any complaints, or we don't see any increases in safety issues.
And they work about two hundred and seventy hours more than a normal forty-hour-a-week employee?
That's correct.
Okay. So is there a way that you could take, if you had these additional staff, I mean, can you work that schedule with all your employees with the number of staff that you have right now?
If we, if we transitioned to the one day on, three days off, it would cost us, it would cost us nine new employees.
Say that again.
If we transitioned everybody to working the same schedule as what Commissioner Pless was talking about, it would cost us nine new FTEs.
I'm not.
And also twenty-seven of the staff would lose about nine thousand dollars a year in overtime.
I'm not asking to transition to twenty-four, seventy-two. What I'm asking to transition to is twenty-four, forty-eight for the whole shift for everybody in the system, because what you asked while ago never got addressed. How many of them have multiple shifts in the same system? Nobody, they run, occasionally they'll add a daytime truck, but they run the same schedule because it's easy to manage. You got supervision issues whenever you have people that, that don't have a supervisor assigned to them. You have a lot of other issues that are going on.
So if you, who said we was gonna have a short meeting over there?
Kevin.
Was that Kevin? Where I work, we've got the twenty-four, seven operation, and we've got four shifts with a twelve-hour shift schedule, which gives one crew eight days off once a month. And you're saying if we went to a situation like that, you'd have to hire nine more people?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You gotta have more, more crews.
Right?
Yes, sir.
That's what I understand. Gregor, these, these positions that you're requesting, let me make sure I understand that right, are they budgeted for, or is just the part-time positions?
We currently are, are attempting to provide the service we're asking for now. It's already been approved, but with only part-time staff, staff that work somewhere else, and they're just want to work here to make a little extra money.
Right.
That's the way we're trying to staff it now. What we are requesting to do is to, to take some of those existing part-time staff, if they're interested, and, and put them on a full-time basis, working a twelve-hour shift because a twelve-hour shift, that seven A to seven P appears to be the number of hours that would get you the biggest bang for your buck to cover the calls that we're trying to cover.
Can I inject something here? Just to kind of put it all in a nutshell, we've got a problem because the rescue squad is having problems. And this has probably initiated all this, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So right now, you're requesting us to move forward through the end of the budget year of June with adding these four full-time people that you say we've got money in the budget already. So we're not asking for a budget increase?
No, sir.
So between now and then, I know there's lots of discussions about staffing and time. Could we have the county manager and maybe Mr. McClure and Mr. Pless, and he's got an extensive background with that? And, and Mr. Schuping kind of come back, work all that out somehow, but for the sake of time right now, we need to make a move because the rescue squad has kind of went to put. Okay, after having said all that, there is some discussion about reviving that. Okay, if somebody breathes new life into that, are we gonna back out of what we're fixing to propose to cover that situation with the rescue squad now being defunct? So can we back down from this at a point in time if the rescue squad resumes normal operation?
If, if you guys, of course, have that autonomy to do, to do whatever we need to do, but I'm, I'm with you on data-driven analysis.
Well, we've got a void here because of that.
That's right.
And, and I tell you, Commissioner Kirkpatrick said something in the workstation that I think rang true for all of us, when he said, we don't want anybody coming to that podium and saying, my loved one died because y'all didn't fund this. You know, that, that rang, that rings, rings a note with everybody. So we do have a problem with the rescue squad. That's a well-known fact. There is a void of coverage because of that, for whatever reason these calls come in. So if and when somebody revives that organization. So if and when somebody revives that organization, would you be on board with us revisiting this and, and making adjustments as necessary?
As always, yes, sir.
But we're trying to maintain public health here and, and make sure that we get these calls answered if someone has a problem. So we don't wanna have a problem with that. So would you consider this kind of maybe a temporary stopgap situation even though you are calling for four full-time people?
Yes, sir.
Got a question for you, Tommy. Have you ever took a job for four months?
Pardon me?
Have you ever took a job for four months?
Well, I've done a whole lot of things I didn't really wanna do, but.
But did you, but did you take a job knowing it was only gonna last four months? That's another issue.
I think it's going in, if you, I have took some temporary jobs. Yes, I have. It was explained to me when I was hired that there could be something, possibly come up in a few months. Was I willing to do that? Say yes or no, walk away or take it? It's a free country. But yeah, I have. I have done that. I certainly have. I'd be willing to discuss that with you afterwards, but.
The majority of the people that, that have been trained and went to school for a long period of time are looking for employment.
Yeah.
They're looking for something in their field of work. And you might find one or two that's gonna do that. But there's one other thing. You've got yourself, Travis, Mike Street, and you have a training position that are all paramedics, all four of them, right?
Yes, sir.
They're salaried, Monday through Friday, nine to five.
Yes, sir.
Why can't you split and two of them run the ambulance, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and two of them, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, rotate the schedule to where everybody gets a weekend off? It's similar to what Tommy works down there in the mill, until we can figure out a solution to what's gonna happen to the rescue squad because if my understanding that these people are administrative staff, does it matter if you do your paperwork on Sunday afternoon when you're at work waiting to run ambulance calls? Or do you have to do it at nine o'clock on Monday morning?
So of course, during the day, during the week is a good time to, to meet with folks. That's when other administrative people are at work and other support services here at the county. We do utilize our staff, our support staff that work in the office to run these calls as much as we can. When we outrun our logistics, we will fail. I'm not sure it's a good idea. It's up to you. But I'm not sure it's a good idea to not have folks to do those, those processes that you, that you count on, on a daily basis, creating the culture of safety, managing the community paramedic program, which is Monday through Friday, creating and enforces, enforcing operational guidelines, working with human resources, working with the finance department and all the things that we do on a daily basis.
But they wouldn't be working every weekend. They would be rotating in one weekend a month, or one, one weekend, part of them would work, one weekend the rest of them would work. You can't tell me scheduling can't be done because just from taking this position and adding it on top of everything else that I do, we juggle schedules all day long. You can meet with important people and you can meet with people in the county. You just may not be able to walk up here at nine o'clock on Monday morning and do it, or come up here at nine o'clock on Friday morning. You may have to say, "I need to talk to you about something." Can we set an appointment? Which is how you're supposed to do it in the first place. I think you already have the resources. I think it's just the fact that you're not managing the resources. The easy solution is, let's hire more people. Let's throw more money at it. When you've got a budget that's not maxed out, you've got the people that are there, you just need to change the schedule and make the system work like the system's supposed to. For the, for the next little bit, it would increase your salaries between 15 and 17,000 per person on the number of people that you would need to move off of that 24/72 shift onto a 24/48. They're already getting paid. You're just gonna add overtime to them. This 67,000 that you're asking for, it wouldn't even be touched, but it would still be within your budget and we wouldn't have to do anything that's gonna jeopardize somebody else's job come Ju-, come July.
I think, I think, Mark, to your point, and I think the EMS structure is probably what you're talking about, how the, what the structure is now.
There's four people in supervision and there's also four people on that extra two ambulances. There's eight people there that could fill this job without hiring more people.
More people, okay. Well, I think Brandon and I had talked with Brian about, you know, probably when you first came, I think we asked Brian to look into the structure of EMS, because we've, we've had, you know, a few complaints about that. And, and we don't know, and so we, we'd asked Brian, once he got, got on board and to take a look at that. So, and I'm sure you're probably kind of getting your feet under, you're gonna figure out what, what needs to be done there. So I, I think that's been a process that we've been looking into and he's just not, you know, got to it yet, if you will. And I think you said, Greg, that the part-time people, we're, we're having trouble attracting part-time people to fill that position. That's why the ambulance.
It's just a matter of availability when you have a part-time job.
Oh, okay.
They got, they got other jobs, I assume, that they're doing.
Sure.
Plans.
They're allegiance is to their full-time employer, as it should be.
Sure.
Would you be able to take care of some of the convalescents with this?
Right now, we're doing the best we can.
No, I mean, if we add these, you'll be able to take care of that a little bit better?
We're doing the best we can with them. We don't know when the call volume, there's not enough data yet to determine what the impact would be.
Okay. Cause I've talked with some hospital folks and they want us to be able to get, they want that to succeed in, in whatever way. And I think we, we gotta look at that also on it, so, okay. Does anybody have any other comments or questions?
Greg, you're asking for it to be from 7 to 7. Is there a reason for that as opposed to 9 to 9? I mean, technically, it looks like the 9 to 9 would cover more calls than the 7 to 7.
Yeah, and, and that's, we use 7 to 7. We, we'd wanna get them in there and, and like we said earlier, you know, checking the truck off and getting this thing ready is part of the game as well. But the hour, the hours, you know, we can do what we need to do. It's 12 hours, seven days a week. If it needs to be, 8 to 8, 9 to 9.
And, I mean, obviously if somebody's in the middle of a call, they don't leave, well, it's time to go. They don't, they don't leave the guy.
And, and that's correct. And if they, they routinely, any of these, any of these guys are used to working a little bit over if they're on a call or something else.
Right. Well, I'm like Tommy. I mean, I think, I would like for it to be reviewed and Brian, if you haven't had time to review it and some of these questions fleshed out. I mean, I'm, I'm sure there's differing opinions on how EMSs should be run. There's not just one way to do it. And so maybe that can be looked at over the next couple of months as we, as we put these people in these particular jobs. I think you probably should notify them that, you know, this is, this is full-time work for the meantime, but there's some, obviously some discussion about whether that's the proper way to handle it or not. And I think we need to determine that by the end of the budget year.
Yeah, I think Kevin mentioned, we had met with Brian earlier and asked that that be done as well. So I think we're all in agreement, you know, as to what you just said. But I had run some rough numbers here. I think, Mark, to go back to what you suggested, if we do work the overtime or if we do hire for the next four months, I mean, we're talking about a few thousand-dollar difference if you split that 67, which I assume would be for a year, if you split that over for the next four months. Cost-wise, it's probably gonna cost us about the same amount of money if we work the overtime or if we hire the other four positions. The question is, what do you do after the, that fourth month? I understand that. But that would allow us time, or allow Brian time to review this and see what our best options were and also along with Greg, so.
Well, and that's all I'm asking is that you move the people into the position you already have while we evaluate it because hiring people and then having to fire them is a very delicate thing and nobody wants to send somebody to the house when the resources are there.
I agree. I, I just think, I'm with Tommy. At the plant I used to work with, we did hire temps. You know, we'd done it quite often. Matter of fact, that's how we'd bring people in most of the time and if they worked out okay, then we could hire them. And if not, it was easy enough to send them home. So I think if they're under the understanding that that could happen, you know, I know that you might not find the quality of people that you want, that, that's a big question. But for the short term, you know, it goes back to what we've talked about, you know, I, I just want the coverage. I don't want somebody standing up here asking us why we didn't have coverage or I don't want a family member that needs it not to have the coverage. So we need to do something, that's for sure. I think we just need a little more time to decide what that is.
Yeah, and I agree with the coverage. I think it's gotta be there. I mean, you can't leave people without, nobody leaves people without. I just think there's a different way of doing it.
You know, the, the moving target here, the dynamic that's got us all wound up is this rescue squad, you know, the situation with the rescue squad. So hopefully there'll be some good people come along and I, I've heard some talk that, you know, if that, that comes along, that's, that's, that's the big X-factor in this whole discussion. So it's not like you're being deceptive when you hire someone. You know, you need to let them know upfront how it's gonna be. They can take it or leave it. And Mr. Schuping, in the short term, I mean, you may really have to shuffle your schedule if, and, you know, again, this'll be a discussion. Some people may have to get out of their comfort zone and, and for the short-term stopgap, if you've got extra people, we certainly, and I know your heart's in it. I tell you what, my hat's off to the EMS people. Their heart's in it and they'll answer a call 2:30 in the morning and go help somebody. And I appreciate that. It takes a special kind of person, but emergency situations, and that's what we're in. They call for emergency measures sometimes, so.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and ask for a request or a motion to approve to hire four additional full-time paramedic positions for EMS.
Can I make a motion that we're not approving? I'm sorry, Kevin, I'm just messing with you.
Don't hurt the ass, Greg.
True, true. I'm learning.
I'll make the motion as long as it includes in it, you know, some discussion with these new people about this discussion and, and the potential of their continued, continued employment based on, you know, some research and study and continued research and study.
Is there a second?
I agree, second.
Okay, and I just wanted to say, you have a lot of turnover at EMS, I guess, so if we did hire four and we had to lay them off, it probably wouldn't be, you'd probably go to have.
We, we hope to not have any attrition because it costs a lot of money, but yes, we, you know, from time to time, we have some.
What you're saying is if, if we hire them and we have some attrition, they're already trained so they could step in to, or they'd be there anyway, I guess.
And you, you know, the, the budgeting, it's not gonna cost us anything to do this, correct, Ms. Davis?
Through, um, June, they have money in their budget.
Okay.
Through this budget year.
Yeah, through this budget year and as Mr. Kirkpatrick said and ideally seconded, it'd be for review.
Okay, all those in favor expressed by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
No.
Okay, that's four to one. And, and I think your comments, Mark, have, you know, have gotten, have gotten a conversation going on, trying to, you know, look at our structure and make sure that we're doing the best that we can do there and stuff, so. Thank you, Brett. Thank you.